Time to serve our regular selectmen's meeting and we'll close the public hearing and open the selectmen's meeting. We've already done the pledge of allegiance. The first thing on the agenda is a resolution, which I will read. Whereas the people of Littleton recognize Eddie Moore's volunteerism, dedication, and loyalty as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Littleton Water and Light Department; whereas the town of Littleton is grateful to Eddie Moore for his 15 years of service and his almost perfect attendance even under unusual circumstances while recovering from an illness and attending by conference calls and whereas Eddie Moore always defended the people, used a common sense approach to problems, worked diligently with other commissioners and superintendent to ensure the Littleton Water and Light Department provided economical energy and water for customers and enhancing the quality of life and the insurance of a clean and healthy environment. Now therefore be it resolved, Littleton Board of Selectmen hereby commend Eddie Moore for his leadership skills, uncompromising integrity, and individuality that resulted in some very noteworthy accomplishments. 2004, Littleton Water and Light authorized to participate in the New England wholesale power supply market. 2010, a new 10MW distribution substation constructed. 2013, a new 1 million gallon central drinking water reservoir was built. Several master plans were developed throughout this period that assessed the condition and capability for both water and electrical systems. Thank you Eddie.
They're taking pictures of us. Probably gonna break the camera. You or I.
Here we go. Anybody? Give him one of those vice-like things. We got one more of those. That's a pepper smell, alright. Here we go. Congratulations.
You haven't burned that fall. I still use it today.
I think if, a little bit out of order, but if anyone else would like to make a comment to or regarding Eddie and his tenure, now would be an appropriate time.
I'd just like to say, all of us here, most of us here, we've been many of the events that Eddie has operated. He's always been a calm in the storm. And he's always slow, as Eddie is always educated. I think what you said in Skyler was completely right, but always on track, never a hidden agenda, get it done, get it done right, always fair. And all of a sudden, Hallmark and Littleton again. Thank you Eddie.
Thank you.
Eddie and I worked on many projects together. And he was always the sounding boy because he had more historical knowledge than any other 20 people put together right now. And no matter what we put together, and there was many of them that had to be presented to the people, Eddie's words of wisdom were always, had to be accurate, had to be truthful. Whatever you tell the people, you always tell them truth. And he should be really commended for that. As a political bureaucrat today, there aren't many others. Thank you Eddie. Thank you for the talk, Eddie.
Thank you. Everybody else? Ryan?
I've had the opportunity to be on both the select board and the school board. And many half-baked ideas never got brought to fruition because one would ask, what would Eddie Moore say? And the answer would come back, and the half-baked notion of it arose to the occasion, that idea's never got a good start. And Eddie's willingness to always stand up, you talked about his phenomenal work on behalf of Water and Light Department, his lifetime achievement of looking out for the taxpayers, his work keeping us out of court for how many years on the ZBA, Eddie?
Thirty-four years.
Thirty-four years. So his contributions on the Water and Light are extremely significant, but his whole body of work is about as impressive as any citizen has done in the town of Littleton, probably in the state of Manhattan. So your recognition is certainly well deserved.
Well said. Thank you. And also pass on the chairmanship over to Jessica Day on the zoning board of Des Moines. It's time for me to turn over. Just like you did at the Water and Light Department, I'm just turn over. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you all. Next up on the agenda is the Profile Cable Consortium contract renewal.
So Eddie's gonna, Eddie is the chairman of the Profile Cable Consortium. We've been meeting intermittently with some difficulty, some of the communities are hard to get a hold of and get coordinated. Eddie's always there, and he's gonna give us an update. We've gone through one year renewal for renegotiation, and Eddie's gonna talk a little bit about where we're at right now.
Well, we had a meeting last Thursday at Opera House in the tower room. We had a representation from all seven towns and the attorney from Houston, which we're trying to get her to represent all the seven towns and also work on the franchise. And we've extended the franchise for one year, and she wants to extend it for another year. As I understand it, Houston is all through the town. Now in my possession here, I have, I think, six copies of my agenda that I have put together over the period of years, which is deals, ending contracts, it has all labeled in the contract, all the towns are on the left side, I'm on my way down to all seven towns, I used to go to all the seven towns and possible. And I wanna give it to the table, give it around to everybody and put it on the floor. Just all of it is a breakdown over the years, and all of it is in the contracts of all the towns, it's on that piece of paper. And I put them together, and I actually have contracts of all seven towns, including them, in my possession. But I don't necessarily get them together very often because I have no reason to, but at least now we're gonna meet every second, Thursday of each month in the future, and we're going to see if we can start working on a program. Believe me, I've got a lot of ideas about it, but hey, let's it come up. The consortium has a sum of money with the town of $7,420.80 in possession with the town, with a contract that I have possession of with it, and we're going to use some of that to redo the, I think it's $150 a town, to do the extension for one year. And as far as I'm concerned, the consortium will pay for that. So the town won't have to pay for it, we can pay for it. That's not it, but I'm not gonna pay for all the franchises. These are the towns who have to pay for their own too, when it comes time for changing them anyway. But we're gonna have the attorney put together a kind of a mock one, and slowly work together with towns until we can get it together. Hopefully we can get it done within a year. You have $50,000 that goes into the general fund that we collect from the franchise with the previous sample of the gross income of the cable company, which is, I'm one, sold to Comcast and now Spectrum. They keep changing, but what we're still the same, nothing's changed. I look forward to continuing with that on that in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
And so what would be helpful would be a motion to direct and authorize your representative on the cable consortium to work on and present a one-year extension contract for your future signature.
Awesome. Second. Is the motion the second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Anything else?
Not on that item. Next item, we have finance rates. First, for your consideration is the Sub 5, which we had a presentation on at an earlier select board meeting, and the select board agreed to move forward with the state clean water reserve fund as a funding source. That source is a 2% loan for 20 years with a 12.5% forgiveness at the end of term. And what we need at this point would be the adoption of, or the adoption of the resolution to authorize Skyler as chairman and myself to sign on behalf of the town and pursue the clean water fund. And I could read this real quick if that would help. It just says that after thorough consideration of the nature of this water pollution problem, hereby determines that construction of certain works generally described as sub-area five wastewater improvements is desirable and in the public interest, and to that end, it is desired to apply for assistance from the state revolving fund, and whereas the applicant has examined and duly considered the provisions of RSA 4814 in the New Hampshire Code of Administrator Rules, Chapter Environmental 500, which relates to loans from the Clean Water State revolving loan fund, and deems it to be in the public interest to file a loan application and authorize other actions in connection therewith. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Littleton, the governing body, or board directors of said applicant, as follows. The person holding the position of town manager currently held by Andrew Dorsett is hereby given designated as authorized representative of the applicant for the purpose of filing an application for loan in accordance with New Hampshire Code of Administrator Rules, Chapter Environmental 500, furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for a loan as may be required. That if such loan be made, excuse me, following positions currently held by the following individuals is, are the authorized representatives of the applicant for the purpose of signing any documents pertaining to the disbursement of funds to the loan recipient. So town manager, myself, finance director Karen Noes, and select board chairman Skyler Sweet. That if such loan be made, the applicant agrees to repay the loan as stipulated in the loan agreement. That a certified copy of the resolution be included as part of the application to the submitted loan. That the persons holding the following positions at the time of loan execution are authorized to sign the loan agreement binding the applicant to the terms and conditions of the loan. And that's town manager and select board chair. So that if such loan be made, the applicant agrees to make provisions for assuming proper and efficient operation and maintenance of the facilities after completion of the construction thereof. And so that's, this would be the resolution you vote on. And this is in accordance with Article 3 of this past year's town meetings.
Is there a motion? Make a motion that we accept the order, the resolution as written.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Next item under finance is the rates we've been looking at, and Karen's been researching finance rates. We found that as of right now, we have the tax anticipation note, which we may not have to take, but right now we're down financing at 1%. We've been deferring costs and working with the school to try to help with cash flow. Tax bills are now out, so we are optimistic that we won't have to do a tan, but just in case, these are the rates on the first item top left. The next slide shows the road street, and after reviewing that, the terms that we received, we didn't really see a beneficial, there's no benefit to the town to refinance that would actually increase expenses for the town. And then on the industrial park, road, bridge, and sewer interest, it looks like we do have some terms that are better, they'll save us, you know, a few thousand, looks like we'll save about $9,000 over the course of the loan by refinancing. And so really, what I'd be looking for would be a motion to authorize town manager to refinance debt when interest rates and terms are in the best interest of the town. For this guy.
Is the motion in a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And next up is just the May, April, and May's year-to-date budget numbers. You know, of note, if you were to look at where we should be at for the month of April, we should be at about 32%. You'll look and see the revenues are actually only 22%, expenses are at 34. But under revenues, you'll see that we only have 11% of taxes, the tax bills haven't gone out and aren't recorded here, so that's a significant piece of the revenues. And then also, the Opera House revenues aren't recorded until the end of the year, so those show extremely low. And again, the sewer bills weren't out, and weren't out for the next month, so those will affect the revenues for year-to-date. And if you look under expenses, you see a similar situation where we're just above, a little bit above where we should be for April, but again, we have to pay out a workman's comp ahead, so you'll see that that budget is at 81%. And then there's also some expenses that have been requested ahead of time, we've got some cemeteries, which has requested some of theirs ahead of time. Town meeting coverage is a, you know, beginning-of-the-year expense. And then additional appropriations that are just requested at the beginning of the year. In the smaller image is the warrant articles, which are kept tracked out outside of that. The next was May, and again, May with revenues, we're at 26%, but again, tax bills and sewer bills aren't, those are the major source of revenue. And again, under expenses, for the end of May, we should really be at 40%, I mean at 42%, and we're at 40, so we're under it, but we're tight, as budgeted, and we'll maintain a tight budget throughout the year.
I have a question about the workman's comp. What's our current payment, or our current, that makes up that 82% makes up, workman's comp paid out must make up a substantial amount, right?
Mm-hmm. I don't have that figure right here, but I could look that up and get it to you.
The other question I have, down at the bottom in the parking meter expenses, payment on parking area, what area is being referred to there?
Which line is it? Parking meter expenses?
Down at the bottom, look at service, where it says parking meter expenses. Which parking area are we trying to obtain?
So this would be for enforcement of the parking meters in addition to probably the maintenance and installation now, on the wrong line?
I've not seen that where you're going. A lot of street noise back here, but you're asking what we're paying for a parking lot?
It says payment on parking area.
Oh, okay. No, that's right. This is for the, there was a deal years ago with a head, it was part of a financing arrangement, and the space behind the Old Masonic Lodge, so this is an annual debt payment.
Alright, thank you. That's all I have.
Andrew, when we looked at this last month, or whenever the hell it was, we talked about getting these, if we could have the year-to-date comparisons last year, this year, in the future, and they're not here.
Right. Yeah, we'll work on that. I think that one of the issues is the program, we use BMSI, and there's restrictions on how to actually produce report. It'll require just creating a new, probably an Excel spreadsheet.
I don't wanna create a bunch of work, but you know, having not, having been new to looking at these numbers, being able to see where we were last year would be helpful to me, but it's a ton of work, I don't wanna.
No, I agree. Yes, it's a good tool to have.
And you can, you can.
I can just have a few other items, let's see. Just to give you an update on, let's see, a couple of items. The traffic light removal at Chiswick is planned for, I think it's the 21st of this month. They've also indicated that they're gonna remove the crossing beacon at the crossing in front of the Lane House on Cottage Street. I've asked that they come and do another public presentation, similar to what they did last time for Chiswick and Industrial Park. They will, they won't be here before Chiswick is actually under construction for removal. We are working with them and relaying objection to the removal. They have offered that the town can install at its own cost crossing beacons, but they're saying that they're seeing a cost of $15,000 to $20,000 per beacon installed. And so I've been also discussing this with just the governor's office about some of the downshifting of costs from the state to towns for pedestrian movement across state roads. Rail abandonment, yeah.
Before you leave that, I want to make sure I understood. You said $15,000 to $20,000 if you wanted to keep that beacon or install?
No, this would be installing a new.
A new state-of-the-art, apparently the one that's there.
Right. In the town will be required to shoulder the costs of maintenance, ongoing maintenance of the beacons.
There has been some community reaction to that recommendation. Some residents are pretty concerned.
Yes. Yeah. And the Cottage Street one in particular, you know, with it being right across street from the Lane House, and the way that seniors move to the regional senior center, and it's a pretty wide crossing, I think it's over 50 feet, so.
I'm hearing from people about the upper end, you know, like these, yeah, about better crossing at the turn for.
Like we're Cottage Hospital. So just to give you an idea, we are meeting with DOT, I believe it's next Tuesday, to do the scoping portion of the TAC project, and that's going to look at all, that whole area. And the co-op is gonna be partnering with us to get an effective crosswalk to get up into their parking lot.
So if we just keep that in mind, you have heard that from different people?
Yep, that's it. And just to give you an update on the rail abandonment, May Williams, the contractor, has completed her environmental assessment, and the railroad qualifies for National Historic Registry. And Chris Kamach, she met with Chris at DREAD last week, and we're talking with DOT just to see about what the next step is, and it's been a long process, and I think we're getting a little closer to actually being able to move the rails. And also, just update on the Safe Roosts to Schools project, the construction start date is going to be June 26th, and substantial completion by August 26th, so expect delays if you're up on Pleasant, or hopefully not Union, I think Union we should be able to maintain to flow tracker. The Bethlehem Town Line, I've met with the Bethlehem representative of Bethlehem Select Board, and we're getting closer to having that resolved. Right now, we're taking the survey information that we've gotten from Belanger, and we're working with our attorney to see how best to document that and get an agreement to present to the select board, both select boards to sign. But initially, it looks like it's keeping the line where Bob Adams probably has it best put on the map, so.
For the people who don't know, some years ago, the state sent a letter to the select board, these two guys were on the select board at the time, but they told us that the Bethlehem-Littleton line wasn't correct, and it had to move. And unlike the high water point on the Connecticut River, this one's more permanent, so it's been a good four years that we're talking about this preambulation issue. The state has one line, and we have one line, and Bethlehem has another line, so I guess it's working out.
Right now, there's not discussion about getting it settled and then taking it to legislature to ratify, it's just to do, you're talking about just local agreement on it?
We're gonna get a local agreement, and then we'll have a, I'll present a step-by-step process to have it actually ratified. Yep. You know, of other note, I guess at the Opera House, it's public now, the chamber has relocated to the Thayer's Inn. We've been showing the space, we do have to take on some additional costs. We've hired a part-time employee to help with scheduling, and then brought on a senior who we've already been using under a senior employment program that's actually free to the town. And we have someone who's already been working with us to help clean the building, who's going to be there. But we're, we should have a seamless transition, but we have had to bring somebody on to be able to help with that, so.
Have you followed the vendor contractors yet? One of the complaints here, and it's a legitimate complaint, Ralph's usually the one that makes it, is that we've, over the years, we've maintained that building well, and we poured money into it, but I'm not giving anything out of it. One of the ideas you brought to our attention a year ago perhaps, was there are vendor contractors, and they work on a commission basis, if they don't find anybody, they don't get anything, and if they do, they get a certain percentage. Have you pursued that at all in terms of?
Yeah, so the arrangement's called eat what you kill, really, and I've spoken with two, and one of them was interested to share ideas, but we figured Littleton is a little bit out of their geographic range, but I will be working on that further as we move along. I'm also trying to show the spaces. We do have an interested tenant for the Cottage Street level. They've brought an architect in and have reviewed it, they're going to submit a proposal at some point. It sounds like it's something that would take, you know, it wouldn't happen, they wouldn't be able to do the build-out and be moved in for another year if it works out. But we have someone else who's potentially interested in the chambers for the space, but you know, it's acting a little bit like a realtor, so it might be best to actually engage one at some point.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's all I have. And our next item.
Next is Dave Hart, let's hear it up for his new road business, other business.
So I brought with me tonight Justin Daniel, who works for Horizon Engineering, is also a town resident, and his son, who could be a substantial benefactor to our work. We had talked, last time I was here in front of the board, we talked about the end of school streets, we're creating a parking area, and then possibly installing a pump track on the land where the old water reservoir was. Just by abilities, I've been trying to follow the correct loops through the town to get all the right approval on everything. Met with the Littleton Water and Light and their commissioners, and reviewed all that. With them told them what we were looking to do, both areas with the parking area and the school street to alleviate that situation that that area is getting a lot of use, and it can get clogged very easily. And then this up area on the flat field, where there's actually a bunch of material from a recent road project, which actually created the idea, we just seen that, just looked like piles of clay, play with. So that's where I came up with the idea for the pump track in. And Andrew asked me to kind of explain it a bit more, and to have, come back and kind of show you what we're talking about. So this is a picture I did show before, this is in Sladeus, Colorado, a pump track that was built on town property, which I like to show that because, you know, they probably have a lot of same concerns of selecting another town. probably have a lot of same concerns of selecting another town we wouldn't have here. And the whole idea behind a pump track is a lower track with rollers and banked turns around it that teach kids just some of their good skills to learn when they want to get into mountain biking and other sports. It's kind of similar to a BMX track or kind of like a motorized motocross track, but there's no big jumps. It's the whole idea to be able to roll your way around this track. Here's a rather large one, pretty ornate, I don't think you can build anything quite that beautiful, but we can dream for it. So, we're talking about taking up an area of a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet, hundred by hundred and fifty feet, up in that area that's just basically forest. Tom Constance and I said that because it was filled in reservoir, they really can't do anything on that property, they can't build anything on it, not filed with that. So, that's why they were kind of in favor of it. And I think we do have a video.
So, this is Jackson, and he was four when we took this, and this is over at Kingdom Trails. This is a pump track that they, they've had for several years, and as you can see, it's have a blast, very fun. There's actually, there's this one, this is one in Kingdom Trails, and there's another one that, there's a video of, that was built in Plymouth. They have a skate park, and they had an area right next to the skate park, and they built a small pump track there, just kind of around the existing infrastructure. Do you have that one?
Yeah, I didn't get it into the PowerPoint.
Oh, sorry, that's okay. But, so, you know, we're, I'm a local, I mountain bike, it's what I pretty much only do during the summer. My boy's been on a bike since he was two, and so now, he's, as he's progressing and moving on from, you know, gravel roads and stuff, he wants to go mountain biking, and so, at this point, you know, it's like, well, okay, we're either going to drive forty-five minutes to Kingdom Trails, or we're going to drive forty-five minutes to Plymouth. So, you know, it would be really nice to have something like this in town. It's kind of funny, you know, I'm older and never really thought about kids until you start having kids, and then your whole life changes. So, now I go to like his kids' parties and stuff, and it seems like, I noticed in the community that a lot of kids, especially in his age, you know, they have like birthday parties and stuff, and it's like, everybody goes to the Evergreen, and they do the bounce thing, or they do the climbing wall, which is great, especially during, you know, off-season when it's winter time and stuff, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of things for the kids. And, I don't know, I think, you know, I take him to school every morning, I see a lot of kids riding their bikes to school, and I think that there's enough kids in the community that would benefit from this, especially, you know, obviously my son, but, so.
The nice thing about this project is, like most of the projects that I work on, it's kind of a combination, public, private, nonprofit, all working together. This pump track will not cost tax bearing, we're going to build it with a combination with fundraiser, actually, the fundraiser started in the middle of real five o'clock tonight, so if we have the meetings on, and Brazilian barbecue, all you need fifteen bucks and the whole fifteen dollars goes right towards the Parker Fund. So, but some of the other specifics that we're talking about, working through this project, is like, you know, there's really good land use liability protection out there nowadays written into the Hampshire statutes. So, the town really is resolved with a lot of that stuff, but then again, you're going to deal with Parker, an order, a nonprofit organization working on town, so Andrew raised the whole insurance question about that. So, Parker's in the process of purchasing an insurance policy design just for organizations like ours, working with town and state on like, you know, they use it on like some of the snow machine things, and some of their other trail systems and stuff like that around the state. And John Hennessy is actually, we pulled him onto the board of Parker, so he's working on that on our side. So, before we would actually start construction of this, we would have a policy of some sort of place.
What do you need from us?
Permission? I'll make a motion to authorize. And I did check with Primex, they indicated that the development of the track has no impact on the town's liability insurance. RSA 50814 and 21234 provide significant protections, so there are no costs to the town for development.
So, we want a motion from us to endorse the project?
Yeah, to authorize them to build the track on town.
Excuse me. Is this confinement, make sure you get it right.
We can discuss it in town action, I'll be on the later.
Somebody interested in building a track.
Think about that, I think it's a great idea, I think it's perfect to have this, we used to have a little over here in the rim park, and it had to be taken out. It was a small one, but the kids love it, they will build their high school. My concern about this, is being up on top of a mountain with no adult supervision up there, and kids just going up there and messing around, that could be a little dangerous. You know, not on injuries and accidents or anything, but possibly bad people hanging around up there because there's kids going up there with no adult supervision, that's a concern. And the other concern is the town liability, it's town property, so it's hard to say the town will have no liability if something happens.
We're in a presentation right now, when we get to public input, we'll listen to more of this. We're not really into questions.
So, nothing's going to happen?
Pardon?
Nothing's going to happen until another meeting or something, or?
In this, in this meeting, this agenda reads, David is making a presentation, and then we have old business and a new business, and then public comment, and then board action. So, your public comment comes before the board action. We're doing the presentation now. Do you have anything to add?
So, the pump track, just to kind of address, it's a little bit, the pump track's not on top of Parker, it's at the end of School Street. The parking area is right around the corner from the gate, so it's very, it's pretty close, it's not much more out of the way than the old pump track, which I had some tools with construction back in the day. So, there was a move to take the parking area and move it up or past the gate, but Wilton Martin Light didn't like that idea because of people being out of sight in the area. So, originally, not taking things through the one, the parking area right here at the track, but literally to walk from here up to there, I think, you know, it's not too much of a concern for a parent, you know, you're talking a three-minute walk around the corner. So, it will be adequate signs on directional, when we open during the daytime, a little littering, we work with Chief Smith when it comes time to put a sign to make sure we put up the proper medical signage.
Do you mind if I just ask him something? Do you mind if I ask him, Mr. Jeremy, just a question about the statute that he's more familiar with, to pre-explain some of these? Could you just address the state's RSA that alleviates liability from this, just because it's going to probably come up under public comment?
Yep, so, can't state it word for word, but it all started about five or six years ago in southern part of the state, and somebody was actually hunting on another person's land and climbed up into somebody else's tree stand, and that didn't even belong to the landowner, fell out and tried to sue the landowner on it, and that created quite a flurry, because they were worried about all the lands that are being opened for public use, and all of a sudden, we had to stiffen those up. So, that's how we were able to alleviate a lot of concerns about not used to something, not used to back up again, because the RSA that came through really puts, releases the landowner of any liability, and even to back it up even further, somehow they worded it so that if somebody does try to sue, that person that's trying to sue has to pay all the lien we've posted, so. And then there's also, they've also put some wording into some of the stuff about inherent risk, so when you are going to recreate, you do have an inherent risk in my doing, so you're accepted.
Something like out in the small, turn around in the back of your ski ticket.
There you go.
Yeah, and that backs up too, so you know, there would be signage up here saying, you ride at your ability. Riding at your ability is one of the good ways they put it on trail systems, don't ride above your ability. Some people have the ability to jump off twelve feet, and so you do need to be able to ride at your ability or speed up there, and who will have that?
I think this is great, I don't want this to be misinterpreted at all, I think it's great, I'm in favor of it. However, I have a question, just, I know we're talking about entertainment and activities as a whole for the community, and there's been discussions about that, there've been meetings about how we improve that. Has this, has this been considered in the context of the whole? I mean, is this the place it should be, you know, all that kind of stuff, or is it there just because there happened to be a pile of dirt there?
Well, pile of dirt started the idea, I guess would be it. And the fact that we had, after I saw the pile of dirt, we had just lost our small little pump track that really didn't work that well, but the kids did play on it, like Ralph said, they needed that space in that parking lot over by Remy, so, no way of playing. It's, you know, my whole thing is non-traditional sports, I love basketball and baseball, but I never played those, I'm always been a non-traditional guy, skateboarder, biker and stuff, so it's, it just teaches the skills and gives the market.
Yeah, as I said, don't get me wrong, I'm definitely in favor of it, I'm just, again, in the context of the big picture, and everybody's talking about, how do we improve this aspect of our community? And, you know, I employ, I have a hard time getting employees to come to Littleton, so I'm in favor of anything that, that encourages that, because I think it's good for the community.
At a recent meeting that we had, we were talking about recreation, and met at the Opera House, and they were trying to get feedback, you know, to organize the meeting, and it was, you know, that was one of the things that was brought up very frequently, you know, people saying pump track, you know, talk about other things, so my comment at that meeting was, would be have, really nice to have Mr. Porter to add.
I think, you know, that if there was going to be any location for a pump track in town, this is the ideal spot, and not because it's town land and because we have the material, but we also have, this is essentially the trailhead for all the walking and mountain biking trails that people are accessing now. If you go up on a, on a weekend and you go to talk to School Street, there's five, six cars there, of people, they're either walking the pine hill trails.
Good, thanks, that's what I needed to hear.
And so, all, you know, and all the Parker trip generally come down in this area, so, you know, the way I see it, as kids progress, and as they get older, and they outgrow the pump track, they're right there, they have, you know, they know the area, and they can, you know, start using the trails, so.
Anything else, David? Okay, so, we'll move along, and then we can discuss it more about public input. Next on the agenda is old business, and according to my agenda, we have one.
I just, one thing, I guess it.
I guess we do have.
Well, not really, I just was going to remind everybody of a.
Might remind the town manager, get this up on the agenda.
Yeah, I was just going to try to plug this bike meeting, it's kind of bike ped meeting, it is kind of old business. Greg DeSanto from North Country Council was working with us, they have federal highway dollars to do a, of course, it jumped all the way back, to do a bike ped study, and there's going to be a public forum on the bicycle and pedestrian movement. This is more like utilitarian transportation through the community versus, you know, simply just recreational, and what we're doing is looking at areas that are in need, where there needs to be improvements, and it's going to be on Tuesday the 20th, so I just want to plug people to get out and come to that, and give your thoughts, opinions, and input, so, that's all I have for other old business.
Okay, next is new business, and we have the Palliata Proclamation Acknowledgement. As you know, Palliata Day was Saturday, and they asked us for a proclamation after our last selectmen's meeting, and without enough time, even notice, and have another meeting. So, I gave a proclamation, which I'm now asking you to approve. And it was my decision to go ahead and do it, I just didn't want to disrupt their deck. I make the big bucks, so I made the big decision. Proclamation's in front of you, I'd love to have a motion to acknowledge it and accept it. Any further discussion? others in favor? Thank you.
Sounds like something that goes on every morning.
It does, it does, I was afraid I might be impeached. We're now into public comment, and public comment is generally reserved for anything that was on the agenda, but it does not have to be limited to that. Well?
I just, I mentioned two parts of that bike thing. The third part was the same issue that Frank brought up, that this public, you know, we got this, this whole thing going on with the parks and recreation, and what can we really want and need for the town, and that should be part of that whole process. I'm not so sure it's a place for the selectmen to tell and go ahead and start building, when this committee is trying to decide what's investing just to the town overall. So, this whole thing should go through that committee, in my opinion, before comes the selectmen, very kind of. So, I just want to get that across, that was a third part of the comment I wanted. The other thing I've got is this, I don't know how to get new business on their agenda. Do you guys, you guys put the new business on, right, not us?
You make an appointment with Seal.
Okay. One thing I do want to bring up is, I attended the planning board the other day, and we were talking about that forty-one acres of land over by Mount Utes. And some of the comments I made, the planning board came back and said, that's not our issue, it's the selectmen's issue, we need to go to the selectmen about that. So, I'm coming to the selectmen to let you know that you've got a proposal to sell that land for one dollar to LIDC. And I have here where that land was purchased by the town of Littleton in 1969 for twenty-nine thousand dollars, for a hundred and twenty-five acres. Now, it's been subbed by the town, it's been that, because one pocket forty-one acres at this point, the town built and put on it, and then it's been subbed by a little debt. But you want to give that town at LIDC for a dollar, and we paid twenty-nine thousand of that in 1969, and the value of that forty-one thousand is eighty-eight thousand dollars. To, to give that land to LIDC for a dollar, to sell it to them for a dollar for future development, which they can't even develop some of the land they've got now, there's no idea, there's no knowledge of what could go in there, anything ever, doesn't make good sense to me as far as managing the townspeople, tax people's money. You know, we buy property for not twenty-nine thousand dollars, thirty, forty years later we saw it for a dollar. That makes no common sense to me at all. If LIDC wants that, let them buy it. If they figure that you'd need that land to help develop whatever areas they want to develop, let them buy it, sell the land for a reasonable price. Another citizen in town has already said that they're willing to buy that land for twenty-two thousand dollars or some amount. But I just want to get across to the selectmen, because they told me, it wasn't their issue, the planning board didn't want anything to do with it. They said it's a selectman issue, take it, decide to bring it to selectmen, that I think it's a bad move to sell that property for a dollar to LIDC. And I've heard the reasons why, the development, the future of the business, the future of the town, but you know what, we can't even, you just said the same thing, Frank, you can't even get people come to Littleton for working in business now. We need so many people in this town right now to fill jobs that are not, that are vacant. Companies are begging for help. Why should we develop another business to bring in people for this town when we can't even fill a position we have now? So, as a taxpayer, I just want to let you guys know that I think it's not. you guys know that I think it's not right for the selectmen to sell that property for a dollar to LIDC.
The planning board was correct in telling you it was not their issue. However, on the transfer of that property, we have scheduled a public hearing.
Yes.
That's when those comments should be made. Not that we didn't listen to you just now. But if you wanna get on the record at the public hearing, that's when that comment should be made.
Okay.
And that will then become part of the decision-making process of the selectmen on the issue.
Perfect. I can do that. I just wanna let the mic, because the planning board told me, they couldn't talk to me about.
It's a good rehearsal. You get your routine down and at the hearing, you'll be great.
Okay, very good. I just wanna get that out there.
It's okay. It's fine.
I do.
I didn't wanna interrupt you. It's, it's worth hearing and we'll hopefully hear it again. And then it'll become part of that record, that hearing record, that becomes part of our decision.
Okay.
Anybody else? Uh, Rudy was first.
May I have the number of the RSA against the liability, just in cases, guys, the SAE, yes, man, state the RSA, but you know, give the number or stuff like that.
Do we have a mind, but we have two, Mr. Chair?
No, go ahead.
This is RSA five oh eight fourteen.
Five oh eight fourteen.
And two twelve thirty-four.
Two twelve thirty-four.
Yeah.
Thank you. Also, another question to Selatman or to the town manager. How much would cost the town to inform the citizens of Littleton about, I mean, open the time year? Let's just say, you know, to send the letters to the taxpayer? How much would it cost the town, you know, financially burden, you know, for stamps, for envelopes, for, you know, overtime to sell? What, you know, how much would it cost the town to send the letters on the, you know, to inform the town or open time, you know, forum? Because last time we had, you know.
Do you mean, I wanna make sure I understand. Do you mean, in addition to where they're posted now, to actually send a mailer to everybody?
When it's a special, I'm not saying, you know, about the meeting, you know, where we are. Whether they have, you know, a forum for everybody to attend. Right now, about this particular, you know, meeting that you have, the junior pool here.
Sixteen hundred.
Probably, you know, it's, I, I just wanna know, you know, how expensive it would have been.
Roughly fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred bucks?
Roughly.
Roughly fifteen hundred dollars. You mean stamps, envelopes, and.
Every door, every door direct. From the post office. Yeah, every door direct program, the post office, I think it's about fifteen hundred bucks.
Fifteen hundred bucks for.
There'll be printing and getting like a one sheet flyer.
About thirty-three hundred parcels at.
Yeah.
If you were mailing a stamp envelope versus maybe a postcard. So, but that would be, that would be.
You guys have a discount with the town, stuff like that, with the post office, even a physical element, the non-entity?
The post office is run by the federal government.
Yeah, I understand that.
No, we don't have a deal.
You don't have a discount.
We, that's why we try to use, uh, social media and the website and word of mouth, things like this to try.
Here, Andrew, we totally respect, and you know I have a respect for you. You know that. Listen, everything that goes on in a Caladonia, few people know about. Listen to me. I don't, I don't come over here to give that down. Everything that you guys have put on a Caladonia, few people knows about. They're completely, you know, they thought, they, they are meaningful. They, I don't know that. Oh, it was in my courier. Oh, it's in a Caladonia. Caladonia. That's the truth. You know, I don't BS you. That's the truth. Now you do whatever you gotta do. I mean, you know, it's, I'm just telling you, the way, you know, people complain to the Selatman and to your town manager. You do whatever you want. You know, we run the show.
Anything else, Rudy?
No.
Brian, you had a comment or question?
Sure. Uh, trying to kill multiple birds with one stone. Uh, I wanted to come here for Andy's proclamation. You guys did a great job for him. Uh, two weeks ago, actually three weeks ago, this coming Friday, the governor came to town. And Greg Eastman, uh, was asked by Taylor Caswell from CDFA plus the governor's office to put together an economic development meeting. And Andrew and Scott were there. I don't know if, if Milk or if you and Franco got the handout. If the rest of you didn't get one, I'll get you one.
Okay.
It, uh, if you look at the title of it, it basically says, Littleton needs economic growth, which somewhat ties into what Ralph was talking about. And I'm not gonna go through the whole thing because it's, it's too hot and there's no necess, it's not necessary.
Thank you.
But I think if you go to page number two, you'll see the Littleton tax base, uh, which talks about, you know, where we are from a point of frustration for lack of economic growth. Nineteen ninety-five, Littleton had a tax base of two-hundred-and-forty-one million dollars. By two thousand nine, we grew that to seven-hundred-and-ninety-four million, a five-hundred-and-fifty-three million dollar increase. Now, what was the cornerstone of that economic growth? The industrial park. We have twelve-hundred, thirteen-hundred jobs in there, and that's what's made the metal more viable and everything. The four million dollars that we put into the industrial park, one million for the taxpayers, and three million for grants. We have a extremely successful industrial park. So, we have unfortunately, from two thousand nine, dropped fifty-two million. So we're now at seven forty-two, and we're cautiously optimistic that this, the dam being sold for over a billion, and George Sansucci on the job, and other things, that we will be getting back into a more positive thing, situation on our tax base. But the last eight years have been difficult for us as a community, as is the North Country. But if you compare Littleton to just about any other town, we're in much better shape tax base wise, where we are now, and where we're gonna go. The second thing.
Can I point something out on page two?
Yeah.
It's nice to know that Littleton is Coas County's fifth largest employer. Unfortunately, we're in Grafton County.
No, no, I know. But that's, what that was about was the edu, uh, economic, I believe, at the state level, have urged us to reach out to work with Southern Coas County.
Gotcha.
Because they are struggling and they're in worse shape than we are. And what we discovered by doing our due diligence is that Littleton has fifteen-hundred-and-forty-eight more jobs than we have people to fill up locally. So you talk about that. And that we then, we are, we provide seven-hundred-and-ninety-five jobs as of two thousand fourteen. Uh, so we're Coas County's fourth largest center of employment. Berlin's number one. Probably by two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, we may be the second largest employer of Coas County. Because Littleton's a small town, six thousand people. And we haven't grown. We have a high school, less than two-hundred-and-fifty people. So you're talking about your challenge to recruit people here. It's the whole North Country who had a trouble.
Sure, it did.
And Littleton's probably doing better. But you're right. I mean, we, we are in Grafton County, but we are a major employer for Coas County. They're filling a lot of our needs. What came out after that meeting, and to tie into the value of the industrial park, and I'm not sure if all of the selectmen get copies of this, but Business New Hampshire came out.
Got one?
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah.
Business New Hampshire came out, I got mine a week ago today, and basically talked about the hot office in industrial parks in New Hampshire. They listed six. Four on the Seacoast, two in Exeter, one in Salem, excuse me, one in Dover, uh, two in Exeter, let's see, one in Dover, uh, one in Portsmouth, one in Nashville. The only one north of Nashville was the Littleton Industrial Park. And they described it as having sixteen tenants, which is somewhat, uh, imperable to the other industrial parks you're talking about. Ralph may not see value in our industrial park, but those who have a bigger world and see more industrial parks than just that one, looks upon our industrial park as being one of the most successful ones in the state. So when you're talking about transferring land to them, their track record holds up to any other industrial park in the state. And where would we be, Ralph, without those twelve hundred jobs? You were in HR for the longest time. Those jobs don't come easy. Some of the businesses that you worked with left. Not because you, obviously, but because.
Well, they all left after I was determined.
So, no relationship. But anyways, so anyways, on a statewide basis, we'll recognize. The second thing is, when I read the article from the planning board, I went back and just to make a full disclosure, I got on, uh, LIDC. Haven't been for thirteen years, but from ninety-four to two thousand four, I was a member of LIDC. And I was a member during the time period when the coin company came. So just what Ralph has talked about, his opposition to this, there is been a, uh, a community participation on whether to do transfers or not. In two thousand fourteen, the town, and Bruce had launched it up and said exactly what you said, that the town should get paid for the transfer of land for the two thousand fourteen vote, which is being finalized now. I think the vote for that was like eight-hundred-and-twenty-something to two-hundred something.
You're right.
Hymen?
You're right.
So there was like a four-to-one vote, Ralph, in favor of transferring it to LIDC. Was this a one-and-done? No. In nineteen ninety-seven, the town voted to convey two pieces of this same piece. And you gave a great history. In nineteen sixty-nine, that piece was originally purchased, a hundred-and-twenty-five acres, for a regional landfill. Now it got built, but that didn't stop us from using it as a dump. That was a stump and tire dump. And the town conveyed it to LIDC based upon LIDC cleaning it up. They cleaned up a town problem. The vote on March eleventh, nineteen ninety-seven was eight eighty-seven to two nineteen. They were, they were close to about the same numbers that happened in two thousand fourteen. So the people were heard from. There was a second vote in December of nineteen ninety-seven for a special town meeting specifically to deal with the coin company. That vote was five-hundred-and-seventy-six to thirty-five. The community supported the transfer. The amount of acres that ended up getting transferred to those, and there were four deeds that were transferred from the town to LIDC. I can't tell you exactly how that all worked out. They went through the planning board process. But there were four lots that were conveyed to LIDC. The second, there were five conveyances in ninety-eight. January twenty-sixth, eleven-point-two acres were conveyed to LIDC by the town. April of ninety-eight, Foster, the Foster family, Sheila Foster, conveyed the land that's now powered up through two to LIDC, all part of the same plan. July first, there were two conveyances, twenty-two-point-seven-one acres and six-point-five acres. And then on September nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen acres. So out of this piece that Ralph has described accurately, the community has already conveyed four pieces out of it based upon two votes by the community. And they voted a third time in two thousand fourteen, and it was discussed, the same issues about whether the town should be paying for it. Uh, I'm not gonna go too much into details outside of, that if you look at the industrial park from a, I guess, a ten-thousand, uh, ten-thousand-two view, Littleton has, according to what I'm told, about thirty-four thousand, four hundred acres, the total town max. The industrial park takes up between four to five hundred acres of that. It's in the perfect location because it's tucked up against Lisbon, against Shurri Hill, and against Bethune. Many industrial parks are either built around railroad, or airports, or at the end of roads. Why? Limited amount. The town built a two-thousand-foot access road with no houses on it from three-oh-two to, uh, its location where it connects to the Mount Eustis. So, the town has addressed the issues that you talked about, Ralph, many times in the past. And they have come down with votes by the community to support the industrial park. Article two passed in a landslide, was fifty-eight to forty-two. However, under the rules of protest, it had to be sixty-seven. And that was another vote where the community wanted to support the industrial park. So this has been a long time, I guess you would call it a partnership, between the town and that. Now, what has the town got out of the deal, Ralph? The town got out of the deal that in those years since the industrial park has been built, transferring the land from the non, from the town status, then to the nonprofit status, and different things. They generated twelve million dollars in taxes. And one of the problems that the town's addressing this year, we've put a lot of money back into the industrial park. That road on Mount Eustis that you guys are fixing this year should have been done three or four years ago. And I know, because I've been in Milford for three or four years. You're finally gonna do it. We take all this money out in taxes in industrial park and put very little back in. And I hope next March, you'll also do more to fix the Mount Eustis road, which has had challenges on it because of people using it. And one of the challenges that happened was, I was on the industrial park, uh, LIDC board, and a commitment was made to the people on South Street to build that two-thousand-square-foot, two-thousand-foot access road. Why? To get the traffic off of South Street. There never was the intention for that road then, the traffic to be redirected onto Mount Eustis. So when the people last year who opposed Article two because of the utilization of Mount Eustis, they had a legitimate complaint. And I know that you guys are addressing it, and I commend you for it. So residential neighborhood, it should never, ever have big trucks, uh, or any type of traffic coming from the industrial park. It was never built back then. And I know that you're addressing it. So for the industrial park, generating six-twenty-five, total of about twelve million dollars, not counting the jobs, is being the less economic investment this town has made. So I, as a citizen, not as an LIDC member, totally support you doing the transfer. You have the historical precedent. You have the vote of the community. You have economic success. You have the taxes that, that have been taken out of that park and not put back in. To me, that's one of the best deals since the Dutch cut Manhattan. It's the, one of the best economic, and any town in New Hampshire would love to have an industrial park like the one we have. Any town. And when you're recognized as one of the top six in the state, that tells you something. So Ralph, I hope you look at a bigger picture than just what's happened. You're absolutely right. The last eight years have been tough. But that's not an excuse not to try to work harder for the future. And I think that's what everybody's trying to do. Maybe not in the short run. LIDC has never been a short-run artist as a community. They've always looked down the road. They've been always since nineteen seventy-three. So anyways, I kinda got warmed up here. But anyways, the industrial park, I hope you guys will go ahead with the transfer. We have all of the facts going for you. And it's time to move on. Thank you.
Brian, they've done a ton of homework. Thank you.
Well, I have these notes.
Like Ralph. Could you save it and redo it at the public hearing?
That's what I want to.
Well, one other point. I, after the meeting at the planning board, I liaisoned to the planning board. I'm a voting member, but I'm not, I can never sit as an officer or as a chair because I'm a selectman. But I, Ralph's argument is good. He posed the argument there. And, and the dollar, and Bruce's dollar is the same dollar that Ralph was speaking to. One of those Warren articles that you made reference to has wording that says, "for a nominal price." So I went to Webster and I looked up nominal. Uh, the buck fits. But I'm kinda wondering if maybe we have to change the dollar to maybe, this is not gonna help you, but ten dollars or a hundred dollars, because, uh, it's almost, the way Webster defines nominal, there are seven definitions, and this is the one that deals with, you know, money. Uh, it's almost like it's a non-existent value. It is an existent value, but it's pretty small. So the dollar fits the definition, but it certainly doesn't seem to fit, uh, the comparisons. But the word was nominal. I'm sure that, whatever, whichever Warren article it was, people didn't, went to their Westers and find out what, you know, how it was defined, what it, what it said. It was, people were aware of the fact that it was going at whatever the nominal value was going to be.
Milk, thank you for your input, however liked. I like Brian. It's the wrong time, the wrong place.
There's a song.
We need, we need to add the public hearing before we end.
All right.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
David.
Just, uh, one quick point. Ralph brought up a point about, you know, the whole recreational meeting, where it was coming together and where Parker was going. Um, uh, the pump track and Parker is also involved in that whole thing. But they're talking about building a facility, uh, and building stuff. I had to take and put this off until they tried to figure it out. I had to take and put this off until they try to figure out what they're ready to do. We really, if we have what we call a shovel-ready project, we're ready to have this built by the end of July. And so if the selectmen say, well, you know, once you wait till this, well, it has no way it'll happen this year for us, we really, really like that.
I suspected that, I'm glad you said it. Joe, you got a hand up there?
I got a question for Justin. So, I plowed at School Street with a 12-foot pusher at 2:00 in the afternoon, it snows, 1:30. If this all goes through, will you not be in my way from now on up there? A little parking lot, the, Public Works likes to park in Port, Port Thomas, get the cars off School Street. I want to fill that in at some point, if it comes up, but maybe I'm not at, what they're doing up there is actually going to help. They're going to use it when we build this pump track, and I see a lot of activity up there, even during heavy snowstorms, I don't know what you're doing, but it would help us to get the cars off that road, and, and help you guys, you know, record it.
So, are you saying, as is planned, would that result in a help to you?
Yeah, and, and going backwards, like I do a lot here, I'm sorry. When School Street was being redone, I took the end of School Street in August, and I added some drain structures up there, at taxpayers' expense, but I felt it needed there, as the mountain trails come down, to a head, to a head there, is that the right word, what you call that, Dave? Where everything ends at School Street, and your trail starts?
Yeah.
Right there, we added some heavy drain structure improvements right there. Try to take some of the water coming off the mountain, off School Street there, and he's going to incorporate some parking right there that fits with everything we just did, and will help us maintain that road. It's not a big deal, that road, except that it has a school on it, and so, and it's a hill, so we need that. We need to get there and turn around, this will help us.
Good looking, huh?
Hold my card, I think.
Is there any other public comment? Being done, we'll close the public comment section, which takes us to the board action section. We have two items that we can act on, the first of which is the dumpster ordinance. Do you want to act on that, or think on that?
The recommendation that was made regarding the steel tops to the dumpsters, I would like to take a closer look at that, but I would like, because there's a lot of activity now, if you can pass this, I can come back with a modification at a later date, if in fact that looks viable for us.
I mean, in regards to the very problem?
Yeah.
Well, I think we ought, I certainly think you're right, that we ought to look at it. The question in my mind is, do we hold this up to add that to it, or do we go ahead and act on this now?
Yeah, I don't have any idea what it costs there. The fact that we're the fourth most reported town in the state, we're prompting to say maybe we could wait one meeting, or, or so at least.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'd rather not pass something now that we want to amend later. We already know there's some question of, I prefer we, well, I mean, obviously, we don't want to wait till the end of the summer, because we've killed it, but I prefer that we wait and see.
I agree, I agree. So let's hold on to dumpster ordinance. Maybe we should vote to hold on it.
Hold off for, let's say, we'll need to get a motion, right? Yeah, let's hold off for one month. I'll get it.
Is there a motion to hold off for a month?
Oh, yeah, I'll move it, just hold off for a second.
Further discussion, all in favor? Pump track is the other item that we can take action on, or not? Thoughts?
Well, my concerns that I expressed about the thought out, the overall picture of what's going on, I think are greatly alleviated, because knowing that, I didn't know, I don't, I don't bike, so I didn't know that the trailheads were there. Seems like a logical spot, and quite frankly, the comments you made about, you know, it will never get done if we wait for a complete picture to be established, so I'd be, I'd be in favor of moving forward now.
I had a, I had a thought kind of way, where I was at one point, when you first started the presentation, regarding where it is and how isolated it could be, but after you explained exactly where the location is, and knowing that in other projects, you fellows have clearly kept all the safety items in mind, I don't have a question, I'm going forward.
I would entertain a motion to, as the selectmen approve the donation of the town land for the purposes of the pump track?
Certainly.
Second.
Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
That concludes the selectmen's meeting. Thank you.